To start our session on the FY 2018 final budget review. And Ms. Burden is with us, so Ms. Burden, if you would like to present.
Good evening. And the year-end review offers an opportunity to revise the fiscal 18 budget based on current year trends and/or new requirements that have become known or requested since the third-quarter budget review that was approved on March 22. The agenda item is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes for fiscal 18 and adjustments to fiscal 19 based on school board actions taken at adoption or new information like the state revenue as well as routine carryover activities. I should say that this info is a little bit repetitive because I'll be identifying routine carryover items from fiscal 18, and then we have to add those as a beginning balance as revenue to fiscal 19, as well as identify those expenditure adjustments for 19. So it's kind of the same list for three different purposes. And once the year-end is approved by the school board, it's forwarded to the county for inclusion in their year-end packet for any necessary adjustments to our 18 budget and revision to the 19 budget. And all of this data is as of June 30. FY 18 revenue is on page one, and there are changes in sales tax and state aid, federal revenue, and miscellaneous revenue, which is usually tuition and fees. The revenue variance from budget to actual is 5.8 million, and that's due to an increase in state funding, a decrease in state funding, reductions in federal revenue, 5.8 million, offset by increases in other revenue like tuition and fees, for a total variance of 5.8 million. But note that the bulk, 5.6 million, represents IDEA funds that will be carried forward into fiscal 19. If you go to page two, that shows the fiscal 18 expenditure balance of 31.9 million excluding routine carryover funds for multi-year grants, reserves, encumbrances or undelivered orders, schools, projects, and department carryover. The 31.9 million expenditure variance represents about 1% of the total budget and is comprised of unanticipated laps in turnover in salaries and benefits, and a little bit in non-salary savings. Again, the IDEA decrease of 5.6 million on the expenditure side is a multi-year grant that's automatically carried forward into fiscal 19. So the total amount of expenditure savings is 37.5 million, less the revenue variance from budget to actual of 5.8 for a net of 31.7. Moving on to fiscal 19 revenue, the beginning balance for fiscal 19 will increase by 111.3 million due to, again, the routine carryover funds and two school board actions for the BA/CIS lanes to get a step increase in fiscal 19, and the 1% bonuses for those that wouldn't otherwise receive any salary increase, and that totals 77.8 million. The reserve funds are 10 million, encumbrances and undelivered orders are 21.5, and school projects and debt carryover is 44.4. In addition to that, there's 24.6 million that's been set aside for the fiscal 20 beginning balance, and that's about $450,000 greater than the beginning balance in this current year, 3.3 million due to an increase in state lottery funds distributed per pupil, and again, the IDEA funds of 5.6 million. So overall, the fiscal 19 beginning balance or revenue will increase 111.3 million. Page four of your document identifies the recommended fiscal 19 expenditure adjustments that go along with that revenue. Again, the IDEA, encumbrances, schools, projects, and department carryover, the reserves for flexibility in fuel, the step for the grandfathered BA and instructional aid scales, and the 1% bonus. Safety and security initiatives of 4 million that are recommended by the superintendent include eight positions to increase school-based training, 18 positions for mental health support, and the one-time cost of replacing dual-key classroom locks. And the county has also funded 6.5 staff at no cost to FCPS as a response to the opioid crisis. These positions are substance abuse prevention positions, and you see in the item, there's zero dollars associated with it, but we do have to have the 6.5 staff. The last few fiscal 19 expenditure adjustments include the balance of 400,000 is recommended to be allocated to the staffing reserve and would fund an additional 4.5 positions, the online campus program, which requires a supplement of 600,000, so that overall expenditure adjustments are 83.1 million. There are also a couple of transfers to other funds that are pretty routine. Recall that major maintenance was historically budgeted at 10 million, but due to a negative fiscal environment back in 14, the fund was reduced by 3.6 million to 6.4 million with plans to provide year-end funding of 3.6 every year that we had funds available to bring those back up to 10 million. So that transfer is included as well. And then the transfer to the ACE program of only $40,000. That program has undergone recent changes to increase tuition and reduce costs, which has resulted in reducing earlier estimates of a $600,000 supplement from the school operating fund down to about $40,000. So after all revenue adjustments and expenditure adjustments are completed, we're left with a fiscal 18 fund balance of 24.6 million to be set aside to fund the fiscal 20 budget as the beginning balance. The other funds are all multi-year, whose funds flow from year to year, and they have fund balances and stabilization reserves as required. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burden. I have Ms. McGlaughlin to be followed by Ms. Schultz, to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, on page six, under the staffing contingencies address class size, the 397,000 for the 4.5 positions, and that comes out to about $89,000 per position? I'm just trying to understand what, I mean, if this is for class size, is that what we're budgeting? Is it almost $90,000 for a teaching position?
If you include salaries and benefits, yeah.
No, no, I, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to, I mean, a starting teacher salary.
We don't use a starting teacher salary. Anytime we have a vacant position or we're budgeting for a position, we use a MA Step Six plus benefits.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to understand was where you were drawing that. So the MA Step Six is, what's that salary then? When you take out all the benefits? What's the annual?
I'd have to look on a salary schedule. It's probably about 60,000, 55, 60,000.
So that would be almost 50% more?
Probably about 65.
We're pulling it up. Yeah, I mean-
65, 25? Those 65?
No, benefits tend to be a little greater than that. They're more along the range of 30 to 35% if you include VRS, ERFC, FICA, I mean, the full freight of all benefits, including an assumption for healthcare.
Oh, could you, that was very helpful. So if we're saying full freight, what we assume benefits will be if you take someone's salary, what percentage do we then consider the benefits is going to add on? You said 30%?
Yeah, it's 30 to 35%.
30 to 35%?
Yeah.
It might be higher?
Ms. Evans?
Yes, Ms. Moon?
I think my recollection was it exceeds 40% salary plus another, more than 40% to come up with.
I thought it did as well.
Yes.
And Mr. Moon, thank you. The reason I'm referencing this is I think it's really important for the public, and I've certainly had questions that I've heard come from our board supervisors in the past when they're not as familiar with this as well, looking at, we'll say, oh, we're going to put this much money in, it's going to produce this many positions, and then they look at us and say, you know, oh, my gosh, how are you actually spending that amount of money? And so I think, again, as we talk about our budget as a whole, people really understanding that while we have a great value on the importance of benefits, people understanding that it has a tremendous additional cost anytime you're going to add another position into your operating, so the operating pool. So that's very helpful. And then I don't know if this is, there's a way to reference this, but it went through my mind when we had the FCPS ON presentation. Is there anything in this final budget review that reflects some of the forecasting that was being done on where we were going to be putting money into FCPS ON?
Yes, as part of the fiscal 18, we have multi-year projects carryover and-
And which page is that, Ms. Burden?
Well, the quickest place is to go to page three, and when we talk about the beginning balance, and there's the items, a list of items, and the school multi-year projects carryover at 32.8 million. Eight million of those funds are for FCPS ON, just as an example. I think we have radio replacement of 5 million in there. Those are just multi-year projects, as well as the schools 25% carryover, that's about 10 million.
And is that detailed anywhere in this document?
It is not. That level of detail is not included, no.
So I would just like to suggest to my colleagues that I think this is something we own as a board in terms of the helping each other understand what some of this means, but also for the public to understand. I think we need to consider giving indication to the superintendent that that detail should be there because we're responsible and will vote on this, and we end up then hearing, well, you voted on it, but it's actually not spelled out here. So had we not had FCPS ON being presented at our prior work session at the same time that we were doing this one, I certainly wouldn't have necessarily known to delve into what's that 32.8 million. So I actually would-
Ms. McGlaughlin, where are you?
Oh, I'm, so on page three, as Ms. Burden had pointed out, go to 3A under beginning balance, you go down to, I think it's the sixth bullet, it says school forward slash multi-year career projects carryover.
I see it, okay.
I mean, that's almost $33 million. As a board, we should know, what is that? And actually, since we're here, you go down to the next bullet, department critical needs carryover, 6.4 million. I think we should know what that is. So I guess I would say that it would be my preference, Mr. Smith, since you get to be in the seat of most importance, that before I vote on this on Thursday, I would like the superintendent or someone, you know, to, and Ms. Burden, I apologize, this might fall on your shoulders, but I would like that spelled out for us. And I actually think it should be a posted addendum to the information that we're going to be voting on Thursday, so the public can see-
So you're asking specifically for a breakdown of that 32.8?
And the 6.4.
And the 6.4.
Yeah, I mean, because those are basically two bullets that you don't necessarily know what that is. I'm not saying, I'm not, oh, well, I mean, other colleagues may want to speak. I mean, I guess the one right behind, there are just things that where it's more of a generic category, like fuel contingency, I don't need that spelled out. The school board flexible reserve, we know that that's something we always have, but these other things, employee placeholder, we broke it out, and we said it's $800,000, but then we have these huge chunks of the 21.5, the 32.8, the 6.4, and the 3.6 that really, we don't know what it is. So I would welcome my colleagues weighing in on my suggestion, but without putting too much burden on Ms. Burden.
I will, I will put that down as a, Ms. McGlaughlin, I'll put that down as a potential next step that we can consider at the end of the work session. Are you finished with for now?
Yeah, I am for now. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Ms. Schultz?
So thank you for teeing that up for me, Ms. McGlaughlin. So I do think that we have to have an accounting of what we're spending the money on. I guess maybe we're now at the rubber meets the road. Are we voting to have money put into FCPS ON? And if we're doing that on Thursday, which is the, no, we are, because the 8 million of the 32.8 million is for FCPS ON. So we are. And I'm going to tell you, I have a problem with that. We fundamentally have not had a board vote on how we are proceeding, where we are proceeding, for which students, in which schools we're proceeding. I don't know what the 8 million is for. I don't know how it's going to be spent. And I, I still, and I don't know what the status is, my request was, what happened at schools that were asked to peel money back? And the reduction of language choices at certain high schools? And so are we front-funding FCPS ON on something we haven't actually voted while eroding existing curriculum choices? I have a feeling that that's potentially what's happened, but we haven't had that presentation. And so that's sort of crosses, that kind of leapfrogs down the table. Mr. Smith, if you want to take a swing at that one before I ask another question.
So, go ahead, Ms. Burden.
Well, the, first off, the funds that were allocated from schools don't represent any salary funds. They're all material and supply funds. Secondly, the FCPS ON funds that are in the multi-year project are merely being asked to be carried forward. Those funds were approved as part of the mid-year, this past year or the year before?
This year.
This year, and that was 4 million. And part of the plan, as you indicated, was that we would take some funds from the high schools over two years, fiscal 18 and fiscal 19. So a piece of the 8 million I referenced is 4 million that was approved at mid-year, and then a couple of million that came from the high schools that they're carrying forward to couple with funds in fiscal 19. And the rest of it is REOC funding that also was set aside for FCPS ON and carried forward. So those are, it's all carryover.
But if they're ruling, if they're ruling money out of their school-based budgets back up to central, they have to be not doing something. I mean, there's a, this is a seesaw. If you take from that side, you know, and give back to central, what's the other side of the seesaw? What are they not able to do? And you say they're supply funds, but at the same time, I don't have a reconciliation about what's happening with the curriculum choices. So I'm struggling to understand the, you know, everybody's professing that, well, it's over here in this bucket, but I don't have a, you know, what's the connectivity to what's happening at the curriculum choices?
Can I add a little bit to this conversation? I'd like to tell you that we, Dr. Braybrand had a meeting with the High School Principals Association, and we talked about FCPS ON, and they use a lot of this funding in their budgets to purchase equipment for their schools, to purchase computers for their schools. They basically agreed to hold off and not purchase a lot of that equipment and put it towards the funds so that we'd be able to fund FCPS ON and make it equitable for all high schools. So that's what a lot of the high schools, in agreement between their superintendent and the high school principals, was that they were in support of this. The intention was that they would go to all the high schools first in the plan. That's what, that was the plan, the project schedule that we provided to you. So we basically took, we carved off a piece of our REOC money, so we didn't buy as much replacement equipment, and that was intentional because if we were going to get to one-to-one devices in all of our high schools, we didn't want to spend a lot of money replacing outdated equipment that was not student one-to-one devices, because we would not be able, we wouldn't necessarily need to keep having a lot of those carts and those other things that we would be replacing. So we intentionally pulled this money to hold for this project with the plan to go to one-to-one devices for students. So a lot of this is equipment money that schools would have otherwise spent, that in central office we would have otherwise spent, plus that 4 million mid-year. So all of this was intended to be holding our and pooling our equipment resources so that we could do a bulk purchase to get to our high schools initially.
That's a better, thank you. That's a better explanation about where the funds came from. But it still comes down to, as a board, if we approve this, that we're tacitly saying we've approved you to bank $8 million towards FCPS ON, and we haven't had the conversation, are you, who are you funding first? Who are you going to fund? Are you going to fund all students? Are you going to fund some students? Are you going to direct it to some high schools first? You know, is there a strategic delivery of this intended action? So that's one, and everybody else can comment. Two, I have a question. I had thought that I'd said either at the mid-year or at the third quarter, could we show the outstanding, like the what-about-isms, you know, that where we are not fully receiving our federal aid as a part of quarter or year-end presentations? Have we, are we contemplating doing that? So I'm talking about, you know, the funding for military aid for military children?
Impact aid, yes.
Is that something that could be added to this? And if not, I mean, I'm going to renew my request that I think a balance sheet needs to show what's outstanding. And that becomes actually, again, a transparency issue for me, that we're elevating at a public level, look, if we were fully funded by the, you know, federal state government on what's outstanding in their obligations, you know, this would be a lesser tax burden on the individuals and Fairfax is out of reasonable request.
Ms. Schultz, are you asking for a next step in that?
No, I mean, if we know the number, I think it should be on here for Thursday night.
So as a next step, you'd like to see that?
Okay.
I'm just, I'm asking you so-
Or they could just say, we're going to do it. I don't know that it needs to be a next step, because we usually track next steps. I don't want to put more energy into saying, we'll put something on for Thursday. There's a lot of whispering going on down there.
So I think that, I don't know if it's possible to do that, Ms. Burden?
Yeah, I don't, I assume you're not talking about, we budgeted this much for impact aid, did we get all that? You're talking about the unfunded piece, similar to IDEA that was supposed to cover a huge percentage, it really covers less than 20%. So where's the rest of our money? That's what you're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's not an unfunded mandate, it's a, yes, it's an, yeah.
You can add E-rate to that, just as long as we're-
We can look at it. I doubt that we could have an answer on that specifically in just a couple of days, but we certainly can-
Okay, then I, now, okay, so now I have a next step. I would like on quarter end or mid-year or year-end balances, I would like us to have that reporting by the staff. I don't think we can focus on it if it isn't reported to us. And the magnitude, again, the scope of the impact of that dollar amount is not well-understood if we don't have it like in black and white or red and white or whatever on here. And then there was something-
Is that for future or for this Thursday?
If I can't have it by Thursday, what I'm saying is I think that we should, as a board, be presented this information on a regular basis, because I think it helps us understand and be strategic in our communications on the federal legislative side, on the state legislative side, wherever the whole exists. And the last thing is just a housekeeping thing. I think when there's a lot of bullets, for us to not go, well, it's the, if everything could, if there could be a standard, you know, numbering system so that everything, instead of a bullet, everything has, you know, subtext, letters, or numbers so that we can refer, you know, 3A, you know, 2 or whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Schultz that we really do need to start accounting for obligations owed to us from our funding partners, in particular, the federal government, and to a lesser extent, the state government. The second thing is, I, I'm going to go back to the 32.8 million and suggest that in addition to the breaking out of it, which has been suggested by my colleague, Mrs. McGoughlin, I would suggest that we put that 8 million that's there as a placeholder, that it's not actually expended until we have the plan which has been promised for the fall, so that there's no miscommunication, that that really is something pending a fuller discussion.
So I will put that down as the next step for us to consider at the end of this.
Yes, please. And just from a clarity point of view in the future, FCPS ON is part of our strategic plan investments, but we have listed here strategic plan investments of just 1.6 million. And so I think it would be actually in our best interest in the future to have our strategic plan investments be able to be clearly aligned with the priorities that we lay out in our focused goals and our strategic plan. My last question, and this is really, you may not be able to answer it tonight, you're funding a number of positions in this carryover budget, and so it would be helpful for us to know how these funded positions that are being funded out of the end-of-the-year budget, how that will impact our ask for next year.
The only positions, the only positions are the safety and security positions, well, they're not the only ones, but the eight safety and security training and the 18 mental health support. Those are not being funded out of year-end. Those are being funded out of the 3.3 additional state revenue that is, are recurring funds that we were notified about after the fiscal 19 FCPS budget was adopted. Those funds total 3.3 million, and of that 3.3, 2.9 and some change will go to fund these recurring positions for that safety initiative. The 6.5 are, again, for the opioid crisis, and the county asks that we include those positions. There's no cost to us. The 4.5 of the staffing contingency is just what was left over of the additional state funds, and so we need to put that somewhere, and so we just recommended that it go into the staffing reserve.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't increasing our ask at the county level without having a real understanding of that. So as long as it comes from recurring funds from the state, then I'm very comfortable with that. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. So a couple things, you know, that top of page three there with the, you know, beginning balance as a result of the adjustments resulting from FY 2018, beginning balance is increased by the 77.8 million and the bulleted list there. I think I agree that we probably need to break that out a little bit with more detail and a little more transparency, because there are decisions inside that, right, that we're going to be making and that we have to be able to explain. You know, it's a lot of money. We should be able to explain it to the community where it's going. So however, you can do that in the least labor-intensive way for you, if we could just get some narrative or something on that, breaking it out. In particular, I would say about the FCPS ON, I mean, it's just, you know, it's my recollection that the board did give pretty clear direction to do the pilot, and I think it's fair and appropriate for the school system to prepare for the potential that the pilot will move into, you know, an ongoing project. So I think it's appropriate for that money to be in there and ready to be used that way, as long as it's transparent and the board knows where it is and what's happening to it. And, you know, we make, do make decisions about when it's spent. So I think that's just another reason for pulling that out and being transparent. A couple of things. Page four, and this is just me maybe not understanding how this works, but page four E, the step for grandfathered BA lane and CIS employees, why is that not a recurring cost? I'm missing something, right?
It's not a recurring cost. Well, it could, it could be a recurring cost, but it's, the board had approved that for fiscal 19 because these folks are on the eliminated lanes. So that doesn't, they won't necessarily get a step in a future year unless you all decide to do that. unless you all decide to do that. But there is a future cost of it.
Sure, because their salaries have just gone up. And so that'll be, yeah, okay. All right, I just want to make sure I wasn't totally misunderstanding that. Page six, the positions funded by the county. I did not realize, I mean, I'm glad to see this. I did not realize the county was funding those positions. I think that's a good point of partnership that we should, somebody should be sure to point out from the table on Thursday to thank the county for that. This is really important. And to get back to the question I think Ms. Corbett Sanders was asking, that is recurring money from the county, right? They will continue to fund those in the future. Okay, terrific. And finally, this is a question I haven't asked in a while since we're looking at the year-end. And I apologize if I'm throwing this at you, but sort of that common sense question, we had this much money to spend and we spent this much of it. How can we sort of tell the story to the county about what percentage, about how efficient we've been? In other words, like, how much money is kind of falling out at the end? Is it the 37 million? Or is it, is it more than that? If we, you know, if we consider the fact that we have to roll over the $8 million and $2 million reserves and things like that?
It's about 1%, which, you know, we obviously do not want to exceed our appropriations because Virginia Code says that we cannot exceed our appropriations. So any time you have a labor-intensive enterprise, you're going to have funds that fall out. And we try to get as close as we can with budgeting for lapse and turnover, but there's still going to be some funds that fall out as a result of that. For us, it's about 1%. That's generally a little lower than most Division C fallout. So I think we're doing a good job of managing that. The number that you see on page three of the 77.8 million, all of those items are routine items that have appeared in all of the year-end board items that I looked at. And certainly, we can provide some more data about the details for the department critical needs and the schools' multi-year projects carryover. But just so you know, that, and a narrative as to what each of those items are, I can tell you that .8 or 800,000 of it is for Thomas Jefferson. .6 of it is for professional learning. 5.5 of it is for transportation, for the radio replacement and the application. The financial systems is 1.8 million. HR systems, .7. Information systems, .3. Actually, that may be instruction. I have IS, so I'm not sure. IT, which is ECART and Lawson, is .2 million. FCPS ON is 8 million. And SIS is .3. And Justice, about 100,000. So these are all projects that are big software application types of funding that goes from year to year. And everything I just read you totals about 20 million. And then there's the schools' 25% carryover that they are allowed to carry over. And this year, that's about 10 million. And that's also well within the range it's been in the last two or three years. So there is nothing here that looked amiss as far as how we're doing business.
Sure, thank you. And that back of the envelope is very helpful. And I think, yeah, if we get that in writing, that would be great, too. Thank you for that, though. That does help. So I just, you know, the last time I looked into what is a typical, sort of what's left over at the end of the year for a school system, 1% is actually pretty low in the little bit of research I did.
Yeah, I mean, when I looked at, I basically just looked at the beginning balances of the divisions around us as far as what they were saying was their beginning balance. And the average of the divisions around us, at least in fiscal '18, was about 1.7. And so we're well below. I mean, the high is 2.8%. And the low for some of the smaller divisions, like Manassas, Manassas Park is like .8. So 1%, we're on the low end of what we're carrying forward.
Thank you, that's good news. Thanks.
Ms. Keys, tomorrow?
Well, I won't repeat what some of my colleagues have said. I'll suffice it to say, I agree with Ms. McGoughlin and Ms. Schultz with respect to the items. I think it was on page three where we have very little, just kind of general categories we have. We don't know what they are. I feel like I need to know what that is. And I think that that is helpful with respect to transparency toward our constituents. With respect to the FCPS ON information, I also would like to know, you know, what, when, you know, what's the plan? Where's the money going? How are they using it, et cetera? I think the public will hold us accountable for that. And you may not be able to answer this question, but I was a little disturbed by seeing the 5.6 million IDEA funds that had not been used. So I don't know if somebody can answer why we have the, did I misread that?
No, that's correct. But that is, that's pretty typical. Prior years' carryover of unspent funds for IDEA have ranged from 7 million to 12 million. So the fact that it's 5.6 actually means that we're making up some ground with that. This 5.6 million is eligible for reimbursement through September of 2020. So it is not unusual that we would have carryover of IDEA funds to spend in the next year and seek reimbursement for. So there's no loss of funds. It's just, it's just a timing thing. And this is pretty common among, you know, divisions around us, too, is everybody's carrying it forward because there's such a long timeline to be able to spend that money and receive reimbursement.
I understand. I, you know, I know that this issue is near and dear to a lot of people, but it is to me as well. And so anything that we can do to try to figure out how to utilize those funds or at least a greater portion of them, I do think there's some areas we can improve in. So I just wanted to make sure I asked about that. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Can I give you some hints? I think last night I sent an email to all board members about my plan to propose a budget amendment. It's a small item, but still very important. That's accepting the recommend, one of the recommendations made by MSAOC at their presentation to fund a publishing of I, a parent advocacy handbook, not to exceed $80,000. I had conversation with this acting superintendent. He feels very confident that $80,000 is more than enough. So, but I'm still putting in all $80,000. And if he can do less than $80,000, that's great. The funding will come from the carryover. Carryover, we have, you know, $24.6 million. So maybe just a small dent. 24.6 is actually more than what I did put in for the beginning balance, required the beginning balance for FI 918, which was 24.2, correct? Okay, so that, I hope that I could get support from my colleagues on Thursday night. And with that, I have some questions to actually Dr. Presidio, if I could have him come to the front because I have more than, more than a copper. And this is in regards to ACE funding. I am really glad to see that amount of deficit has gone down to just merely $40,000 from initially what you were thinking about. It's about close to $600,000. So that's a great news. But at the same time, I wonder how you've been able to reduce that gap from $600,000, $40,000, especially if we could focus on the fact that we just went without filling copper positions. Yeah, I mean, I consider that to be either very smart or very drastic measures, whether that's something that a DIS, your department could continue doing then, continue not filling the positions, or they will put the entire program in untenable position. And as I also understand that, that with ACE advisory committee's recommendation of a providing, school system providing another $400,000 for the program to make it more sustainable, I don't know when, you know, Dr. Presidio's step is going to come back to the school board to let us know what the sustainable model is. And also, I want you to comment upon the fact that there has been about 10% drop-off in enrollment from 2016 to 2017, given that probably their, you know, tuition increase might have played some, you know, might have had some impact on drop-off. And also, you chose to close some classes. Or am I just answering my own questions?
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I will add just a little bit, and then obviously, feel free to ask more questions. You know, I would say this year, I do think we were successful as an ACE leadership team in reducing the amount of transfer requests that we were asking the board for year-end. I think, you know, the recent history, meaning basically the last 10 years with the ACE program, you know that the financial investments that the school system has made have varied quite a lot. So prior to the Great Recession, about 2008, the school board funded the ACE program on an annual basis of about $1.7 million per year. After, you know, all of the reductions to the budget that FCPS had to take during the Great Recession, that amount of money has been reduced to just the contractually required grant match of $235,000 to provide services for the adult ESOL learners as part of a regional, Northern Virginia regional grant that we administer in FCPS. So, you know, at the beginning of this year, we knew that there'd been some conversation on the part of the board about some concerns about the amount of transfer that was going into the ACE program. And we worked really, really hard over the course of the year in partnership with Financial Services to come up with better financial modeling, to give us better information about our multiple lines of business. So, you know, ACE is a number of different things. It's adult and community enrichment programming, but it's also K-12 programming. We run and administer many summer camps and after-school camps and programs that are part of FCPS. We obviously have the Adult ESOL program, which many of the parents of our students take classes in the Adult ESOL program. We run the driver's ed program. So we have a pretty diverse line of business in our business model. And we worked really hard to make sure that we were identifying courses in those different lines of business and their performance. So one of the things that we did, working with Financial Services, is we started to kind of target underperforming courses and eliminate some of those underperforming courses. That is one contributing factor to the 10% decrease in the overall ACE enrollment that Mr. Moon referenced. So we're at about 20,000 student, community member students participating in ACE. And that used to be higher. So that was one action that we took. And it did help our bottom line in terms of reducing some courses that weren't generating a lot of revenue, but it also eliminated some course offerings for individuals in the multiple locations around the county. So there were pros and cons with that decision. We did raise tuition slightly. And again, I think that's another contributing factor in terms of individuals maybe not taking as many courses as they did in the past. We also left a lot of position, well, I shouldn't say a lot. We left several positions unfilled. And they were important positions on the administrative team. So we left an administrative position open this year. We left a logistics and registration support person position open this year that's responsible not for just the logistical side of the registration systems, but also some of the marketing and the recruiting of our programs in the business development side. Because a lot of what we do in ACE in terms of one of our lines of business is providing employer-related services, contracting with employers for job training for their employees. So we left that position open. And we took about a $150,000 reduction in terms of part-time hourly staffing. And a lot of that part-time hourly staffing is course instructor staffing, again. So we really did leave a lot of positions unfilled. And obviously, as Mr. Moon suggested, that did contribute to a better financial position at the end of the year, but it also contributed to a decline in enrollment. So we've been working, as a result of the audit, working with the Auditor General's office to try to come back to the board. And I don't know exactly when we would do this. That would really be up to the chair and to the superintendent. There's a couple of different options. But to try to come back with the board with a more sustainable funding request that would lead to a more sustainable business model. And we're in the process of trying to figure out just exactly what we think the most prudent request would be, but providing some additional financial support for some of our indirect operational overhead, which would allow us to be self-sustaining in terms of paying for the courses that are actually taught, but maybe subsidizing with support from the FCPS operating fund some of the operational costs, marketing costs, administrative overhead costs. So we're in the process of trying to figure out what exactly the precise request would be. It would be several hundred thousand dollars. And there's a couple of different ways we could do it. We could come back and have a discussion at this table. Or it could be something that the superintendent maybe would just include in the budget request for FY '20 that could be discussed as part of our annual budget allocation process.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize if I missed the answers to my questions when I had to step out. I did have questions about ACE, so I appreciate you sharing that. The, I believe on page five, we have the bonus set aside from my follow-on motion on the budget. It says that the options for providing a bonus will be presented at today's work session. I don't know if we have more information on what that will look like. I don't know. Page five, employee bonus placeholder.
You know, I think that is leftover language from last year because that was the first year we did it. Because we were thinking that we would do that in the same way we did it last year, which is it's one payment at the end of November as being an opportune time to give that 1% bonus to folks through their, in their paycheck, through payroll. So I think that, we don't have any options. So I think that's language from last year that we just didn't catch.
Okay, and so you can clarify that it is expected to be the 1% for all of those employees in November? Okay.
Are you finished, Ms. Palchuk?
Sorry, I don't, no, sorry. I'll let you ask that. And then my other question, I don't know if you're going to bring this up, Ms. Evans, but for the re, do we have the re, sorry, now I've lost my place. Reserve staffing on here? I know we, K, on page six addresses staffing contingency to address class size. And this might be more of an HR question. I know Ms. Evans has been looking at following where some of our staffing reserve is going. And I know we have concerns that in the past, some of our schools that see enrollment increase throughout the school year, especially a lot of our, you know, high-poverty schools. By the time it's their turn, the staffing reserve has been emptied out. So I don't know if, I can't remember if we looked at that or if there are, if that requires a placeholder. I guess that's where there was some confusion. If there's a placeholder for a class size, does it, in order to balance that, do we need a placeholder for schools that see increased enrollment throughout the school year?
Well, I know that this first year, well, or last fall, was, I think, the first time that we ran out of staffing reserve pretty early in the year. And I know that the HR group that is reviewing current enrollment projections, class sizes and those sorts of things are being very, very careful so that we do have some staffing available throughout the year if we run into trouble. I think an email went out recently, or maybe it was in the Bravon briefing, that indicated how many staffing positions had already been allocated. We'll know more as it gets closer to the beginning of the school year.
And I will add that last year was the first year where we started the hiring process much sooner. And so we wanted to provide additional support to those principals who were wanting to hire teachers, bring teachers on. And so we did release those positions out of the staffing reserve. Again, we're monitoring that very closely this year and have learned a few things from that rollout last year.
Yeah, and I guess, and I know that that information, Bravon briefing, was an overview. If it would be possible to get maybe the detailed breakout of where we are at this point. I know some of the concern last year was that a lot of that ended up going to our AEP-centered schools and then, you know, our high-poverty schools, especially. They said, "I know HR gave me these numbers, but they know that they have quite a bit of increase after that." And ended up losing some very critical positions. So I don't know if A, would be possible to get a chart, a breakdown of where we are now for the staffing reserve?
Yeah, we have the detail. I mean, I know where we are now. We just, I think we've used about 285 positions.
I guess I mean detailed by school.
But as far as detail as to where those 285 positions went, yes, I'm certain we can do that.
Okay, that would be helpful, and then I'll.
I'll write that down as a potential note.
And it's important to understand that since we are in staffing season, that any numbers that we get could change precipitously within a week or two-week period, so.
No, I appreciate, I think the concern is schools, they know they're going to have an influx, but it doesn't show up yet, and so just making sure that we protect them from what we learned last year. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you very much. Looking at the set aside for the 2020 beginning balance of 24 million, I think we're finally back to a much more normal projection for beginning balance 1% is slim, but we can make that. I believe at the height of the recession, we were pushing forward close to $70 million, because we just had no money, and we were standing still. So that as the, as the financial outlook has improved, we are, it looks to me as though we are back to where we should normally be. We are using reoccurring money for reoccurring positions, which is basically staffing in schools. So I think this is, this is a good news situation. I don't remember was last year 34 million, two years ago? I don't, it was before you were here, two years ago. So as I say, back to truly a 1%, which means that we are hoping that our fiscal situation has normalized. So this is good for those of you who did not live through the 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010 era. It was desperate. I also very much support Mr. Moon's motion to fund the MSAOC handbook. I think that that, again, is a commendable activity. And I believe when they presented to us, they want to be able to print some, but also it will be online as well, which I think is realistic. I also, one of the things in Fairfax County Public Schools that I think we are to be proud of is that we don't have a use-it-or-loose-it policy, that we do allow for carryover. We limit the amount that an individual school can carry over, and that, by the way, those funds are audited every year. And if that becomes out of line, they, our regional assistant superintendents are to ask about that as well as our finance people. And I also think it's wise that we are setting aside and not using all our real money. We certainly don't want to begin purchasing equipment for high schools that is not going to fit our instructional plan for our students being able to actually use technology as a tool, particularly for students who do not have the possibility of having equipment for home use. So I fully support setting aside that money. I think that's a wise way of using it. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to take a turn, then I have one quick go-back, and then we'll go to next steps. One, I guess somewhat technical question. In the narrative, it talks about 1 million for safety and security. Want to look, in fact, we're right there at where I want to be on that page. It talked about $1 million for locks and eight, and then eight positions. So if I'm reading the breakdown correctly, the eight positions are in addition to the 1 million, correct? Okay, so really what we've got is we've got 1 million for locks, we've got 0.8 million for the eight positions, plus 2.2 million for mental health and support. So a total of 4 million that we're putting in here for safety and security. Is that correct?
That's correct. 1 million of the four is coming from year-end funds, and the other 2.9 and some change, or 3 million for the recurring cost, is coming from the new state money.
Okay, great. And Ms. Palchuk, thank you for raising the issue of the staffing reserve. That is something that we need to keep track of. I did have one question on that. It says funding, and I appreciate that you're putting it there. I think the fact that we ran out last year was, created some real problems for some of our schools. It says it will be added to the staffing reserve to provide schools with support for reducing class sizes. Would that include schools that get a sudden influx of students and therefore have to add a teacher to accommodate that influx of students?
Yes, the staffing reserve can be used for either one of those scenarios.
So it's basically, it's not necessarily for those that have reached that, the cap?
No, it could go for either one of those.
It could go for anything.
It would be appropriate from the staffing reserve.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't for just that one, that one thing. Well, thank you very much, and I have a go-back with Ms. Schultz.
Well, actually, Ms. Palchuk touched on it just briefly. I am concerned, so what you're saying is, and this may be a number, I don't know for, I don't know who's doing the actual estimates, if that's, I don't know. But that we're so spot-on with who we expect and where we expect, that if we can go to the staffing reserve number, that we only have four and a half positions in staffing reserve to address, to, hold on, hold on, to address class size?
We have, you can give me the exact number, about 450 positions that are in the staffing reserve for class size issues, for differences between projected enrollment and actual enrollment. There could be special situations that the staffing reserve is appropriate for. And of those 450, and 430 is what Alice says, 286 have already been allocated. And then in, so this four and a half changes that from 430 to 434.5.
Can you guys go to K? So how have you already allocated staffing reserve for next year?
Because the sooner that we start looking at actual enrollment, the better off the principals are as far as being able to staff those classrooms with high-performing people. We don't want them to wait until September and then find out that their class sizes are too large, because that's disruptive to students and.
Boy, am I glad I had a go-back. So I would like, as a next step, I'd like to understand where those positions have gone.
That was down this question.
Yeah, I already asked for that.
Because I'm not understanding, because if I recall, I believe we ran out of the staff specifically for the class size. I believe we ran out of the class size staffing reserve positions in October? October, November? I mean, they were gone. And then that meant that everybody else was left, sorry, too bad. And so I do have a concern about that. And you think, so we're only adding four and a half more positions to what was already existing?
Yes.
So again, for the clarity, I think it would help for us to say, including four and a half additional positions, and then say what the total is. And I would even say of which X many have been allocated. I mean, this is, I mean, I know you know what's in this document, and because we're having this conversation, we're drilling down to the understanding of what is meant by it, but this needs to be a, you know, I guess Ms. McLaughlin was kind of a little bit going there. We need for this to be understandable by the average citizen who's taking a look at it. So I just think that it would help if that, if there was clarity there. I would like to offer a compliment on, I did not before, on the ACE. I know that this is an accomplishment. This is something that we've been working towards. This is supposed to be self-sustaining, other than our contribution. And to go from, what was it, 600 and some odd thousand?
That was our early estimate.
Early estimate.
To 40.
To 40.
Yeah, and what we did last year.
That's, that is, you know, that's a significant accomplishment. So I do want to, do want to highlight that. Thank you.
And I would add, if we're looking at K, that I would suggest just chain, stopping at staffing reserve period, because otherwise it could be interpreted a different way. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just, I first wanted to say that I very much appreciate Mr. Moon's amendment, because he mentioned it after I had already had my turn at the mic. But having served as the liaison for two years to MSAOC, I know this is something that, that has been a strong part of their advocacy for years. And so I'm very appreciative that Mr. Moon, you know, saw this now as an opportunity, given their recommendation yet again to us this year, that we will finally work with our staff to produce this advocacy handbook. It's extremely important, and given the commitment this board has and the school division, we are out of the recession enough that bringing this document back and helping our families, I think, is really important. And then I do want to just say that I appreciate kind of the questions that Ms. Schultz was asking about the staffing reserve, because I know that enrollment happens, you know, through August and September, and I've heard at times we've struggled where we went ahead and pre-allocated positions, and then some of the numbers changed, and then it's hard to go and tell schools, oh, we're gonna, you didn't end up having the enrollment we expected, and so we kind of need those positions elsewhere. Well, we wouldn't necessarily want to do that at the elementary school level. So the numbers will stay, the classes are small, but meanwhile, we need relief at some of our other schools around the county. So I think as a next step, and maybe as a part of an upcoming Brabham briefing, it would be very helpful for the board if we could just get sort of a very high-level outline of here's how we're, you know, taking that July 1 funding, which is what our staffing reserve was, and we're now already at July 23, and we're told that a lot of them are spoken for. So I think we need to understand that whole process.
But we haven't yet done the de-staffing, which is slated to occur in August, because obviously, like you said, we don't want to do that after school starts. But in August, we sit down and take a look at all of the general ed classes, and, you know, what's the actual enrollment compared to the projected. And so if we have to pull any back, we try to do that then before schedules are set.
Excellent.
And so that also has the ability to put some teaching, some vacant teaching positions back into the reserve, so that we would have them for usage later in the year.
Great, thank you. And that's why I'm thinking that maybe in a Brabham briefing, just giving us that outline that you gave is helpful, because the public may ask us.
We can outline that process. It's a process we've been using for many years. And again, we're going to be monitoring those positions very closely this staffing cycle.
Ms. Palchuk, and then we go to next steps.
I think you have two quick go-backs. Thanks to Ms. McLaughlin. The first one is, I guess I'm wondering, because there will be the de-staffing, is it possible, I guess, to maybe have a monthly update for the board to be able to see where we are on staffing positions? Something reasonable, I guess I'm asking if we could have a reasonable update as things really change in our school's staffing reserves?
You know, we really need to have, like, HR people here, because I'm kind of winging it.
So maybe next step to figure out.
I know the big picture, but.
We can figure that out. I don't know how cumbersome that would be, but we can see what we can put in the Brabham briefing as an update, much like we did this last time around. And I know that you wanted that broken out by buckets, essentially, and so we could provide the board with more updates about those positions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then my other question, and thinking Mr. Moon, I support that, the amendment for the MSAOC definitely as a one-time. I guess my question is, I was trying to remember our conversation, was that probably every three years, I think, MSAOC said it had to be updated. And so we had the conversation. I asked, could it be incorporated into, you know, our recurring funds? I believe Dr. Duran said that could come out of his department. I don't want to put false words into anyone, but I guess I would support the one-time funds for the initial production, but I want to make sure that, you know, it is updated.
My understanding was, you know, he might have been able to come up one-time funding out of his office somewhere to do it, but I wanted to see a board taking an expressive position.
No, I understand the one-time, and I support that. My question is, as we.
If we were going to do that, I would suggest that we go ahead and put that additional expenditure into the Office of Equity Budget on an ongoing basis, because it's not there now.
Right, so that's what I would like to know.
The board would have the opportunity to do that during the next budget cycle. And so what I think that we would like to do is first see how much it would cost before we build those costs into the budget, but the $80,000 is a good start for that.
So could we maybe tab that into our next budget, so we remember to review that and get an estimate of what the recurring fund would be in the equity office, to have this be a regular breakout ongoing?
And we can certainly look at that as part of the budget development process.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Chair, could you put up the, or Clerk, Madam Clerk, could you please put up the next steps? Okay, this is Ms. McLaughlin, page three. Provide detail on school multi-year project carryover, 32.8.
I'd actually clarified that I wanted breakouts more, and I think what I heard from our colleagues is that whole section needs to be detailed where appropriate.
On page three, okay. So let's see the language on that, right in section. If that makes sense. Okay. Everyone who can support doing that? What?
I should say, provide budget detail or breakout.
I have a question on three, 3A for the whole beginning balance?
Well, if you look at there, there's, I mean.
77 million, or just the 21.5 and the 32.8?
No, I said, originally I cited the 21 and the 32, but then I and others did note, well, what's the 6.4 million and the 3.6? So I think it turns out that if we want 80% of it detailed, I mean, fuel contingency is pretty clear, but it should be broken out so that if it's, if it's something more than just one line item of funding, it should be broken out, what is it going toward?
I think the flexibility reserve is just, that's just 8 million for the flexibility.
That's what we've had for year, yeah.
Right. So that doesn't require a breakdown.
It's just the 41 million that you were talking about, the school-based, and then the department.
No, thank you, Mr. Smith, that's not what I'm saying. I noted those two, but then several of us said the 6.4 million should be broken out, the 3.6 million should be broken out, and then actually some people even said the strategic plan investments, what's 1.6?
It's not difficult for us to break out all of these bullets.
Yeah, I think it's transparency.
Anything that can be broken out. Ms. McLaughlin, I think probably the first couple of bullets don't require more, if I'm not mistaken, the employee bonus.
You're correct, the first four, I believe, are just singular line items.
So one, two, three, so the bottom five? Basically, you'd like the bottom five bullets broken out?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we say that? Detail on the bottom five bullets in section 3A. Is everybody, shall we take a look at that? Show of hands who can support that? Okay, excellent. Provide quarterly updates on obligated funds unpaid to us by IDAA. That's Ms. Schultz.
I would just say, is it only IDA that's missing?
Impact aid for military.
Right, so I would just say.
Any other federal, state?
Yeah, federal and state funds that are obligated and unpaid.
Okay, everybody. Quarterly updates on federal and state.
Yep.
Funds that are obligated and unpaid.
Unpaid.
Period? Okay, does that do it? Ms. Schultz? Ms. Schultz? Okay, everybody who can support bullet two? Okay, that's a majority. This is Ms. Corbett Sanders suggests putting 8 million for FCPS on. This is back to page three, correct? Okay, so this is back to page three, and report as placeholder versus obligated funding pending the plan being brought forward. Does that capture it?
Yes, that captures it. The concept here is that we had this discussion about FCPS on and a commitment that we would have a fuller plan before we actually expended funds. So I don't want the funds to go away. I just want to make sure that we honor the earlier, the earlier commitment made regarding FCPS on.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I just had a question. I don't know, does that make any difference in the budgeting? If we call it a placeholder, or we just call it a budget item? I mean, does it matter to you?
It's set aside, and it would be set aside until the board voted on how we actually expended those dollars.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, and so everyone who can support bullet three up there? Okay, that goes. Ms. Palchak, I think you might want to specify more what you had in mind here.
So it's the breakout by school of the current staffing reserve? Yes.
The allocations?
The distribution, so we have the different buckets. So we have the enrollment bucket, we have the class size, and then we have the other, which would include other types of extenuating circumstances, which is how we...
But you're looking at how, where they have gone so far?
Or they've been assigned.
Okay, so basically breakout of allocations, correct?
Yes. Yeah, breakout of allocations, and then I'm happy to either make it separate or included here, you know, a proposal for how to give regular updates on this. So what we have now...
And getting regular updates?
Well, for staff to tell us, HR really has to help us figure out.
So why don't we say regular updates, and then the superintendent can bring back what's reasonable, perhaps? Does that make sense?
I think that makes sense.
Updates on the use of the staffing reserve, is that, is that what we're after here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Everyone who can support that? Okay. And I think there was also another one there. Ms. Schultz had asked that K be restated for clarity to include, to include the current number in the staffing reserve, as well as the number used. And I had also suggested that we leave it open where the other 4.5 be used. I don't know if you want to combine that or make it into two.
Actually, I do have a question for you, because that kind of slipped in there at the last second. So my question was, if these are positions that are designated to defray class size...
Well, what Ms. Burden said is that it could be used for anything. That was the answer to my question, that it could be used for anything in the staffing reserve.
Well, then why were they designated for class size here?
Well, I'll leave it to Ms. Burden to answer again.
It's just a recommendation. After we had all of our revenue changes and all of our expenditure changes, there was a $400,000 remainder, and so we said we will recommend allocating that to the staffing reserve.
So knowing, so, I mean, you can certainly call for it not, but knowing that we ran out of the staffing reserve for class size, basically mid-November?
Didn't we run out of staffing reserve for everything?
Yes.
It's for everything, it's not just for class size.
I think that when we refer to staffing reserve, we often refer to it as reserve for class size. That's, we could easily just take out class size and just say that we're going to allocate it to the staffing reserve.
Well, there were lots of classrooms that were left oversized, because we did not have any more staffing reserve, and so I would prefer that we address, because we made a commitment. We said that we were, we were going to do the de-staffing, and that we were going to set aside staffing positions specifically to address class sizes. So then, then what? Then how, then what's the decision? Do we leave an oversized classroom and then staff something else?
And Ms. Schultz, I had the opposite in my district, where we had an influx of students and had nothing in the staffing reserve to take care of it. So it was the same thing, we just didn't have anything in the staffing reserve. Ms. Hines?
Well, I was just going to say, historically, we may be remembering this a little bit differently. My understanding was, a couple of years ago, when we put the caps and triggers in there, right, we were, I at least was worried that the staffing reserve would not be enough to actually make the caps and triggers work. So we put in some extra money at the end, and it was more a talking point that it might be something we would need in the staffing reserve, because the staffing reserve might not be enough, you know, given the caps and triggers. So I never thought of it as, this amount of money is only for class size reduction. It's more, we're padding the staffing reserve a little bit to deal with what we see as a recurring need. I think four and a half positions is not a lot, but, and if anybody wants to propose we do more, you know, I would think about it, but, you know, it is more money.
And it's a practice that the board has done over time, depending on what money is left, where additional positions are added at mid-year or at year-end, and so that's what it was with these particular positions. And I hear you all loudly and clearly about the using of the reserve last year, which is why we are being very careful in monitoring, and I can't express that enough, that we're being very careful in monitoring the allocation of those positions this year, so that we're not in the same position that we were last year. I have been in on staffing meetings, we've been working very closely with Dr. Ramey, he's out the door, but working also very closely with finance, staffing, HR, to ensure that we are asking lots of questions about the positions before we allocate them, and then being very tight when the numbers don't come in, that we pull those positions back and bring them back to the reserve. So we are, we are looking at that with a very close and tight lens.
Ms. Keys-Gamaro?
Yes, I need to ask additional question. I'm not sure if you can help me with this, but on F, employee bonus placeholder, Ms. Palchak was just explaining to me that that is, what that is for. I was confused that, you know, there, you said it had not been corrected. Can we get greater specificity as to who would be, who we would be talking about for those bonuses?
Yes, it's all of the people who would get no salary increase whatsoever. So it may be somebody who's at the top of the scale, and so is not eligible.
And that's the specificity I'm looking for. I mean, because we're talking about 770, you know, quite a bit of money here, so I personally would like to know who we're addressing. Thank you.
All right, so back to this item. If you'd like to separate it out, Ms. Schultz, we can do that, but, so I guess, let's see how many people are interested in restating.
I'm just wondering, what's going to be the determining factor? Like, if it isn't for class size, then what is it for? Is it first come, first served?
Well, again, if you have an influx of children, then that would count as reducing class size, if you add a teacher, so you don't have a class size of 36 in a high-poverty school. You know, that would still, I mean, that was my understanding, and so from my understanding of what Ms. Burden said, talking about just leaving it, that it's going into the staffing reserve, and not specify it was a matter of simply clarifying it, as opposed to changing the impact of it. Because I believe you said that the idea was that it would simply go into the staffing reserve to be used for however the staffing reserve is used. So that's my advocacy, that we clarify that. But I can put it in a separate one, if you'd like to have this one considered separately. So does this capture what you wanted to do, Ms. Schultz? Ms. Schultz, does that capture it? Okay. So let's have a show of hands, how many people can support this? Okay. And then we need a separate one to say, to clarify, just clarify that the four positions will go into the staffing reserve, period. 4.5 positions. Yes.
Mine bullet.
Okay, well, let's finish this, and then we'll go to the next one. Okay, that, so how many people can support doing that? Okay, so that's approved, too. Ms. McLaughlin, which one is yours? What?
The one that was highlighted right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, we went, we went over it, okay.
Included in the Braeburn briefing, explanation of the process for the staffing reserve. It's the staffing reserve.
So the process for allocating?
Right, allocation, right.
Okay.
Allocation process for the staffing reserve, yeah.
For staffing reserve, okay.
And we can do that in a one-page bulletin, so that you can see what happens with the process.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, and all right, show of hands, how many people can support doing that?
And Ms. Keys-Gamaro's next step.
And you had, yeah, okay, so one more next step. Ms. Keys-Gamaro, would you restate that?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify paragraph F with respect to employee bonus placeholder, who that would impact, if we could identify with greater specificity who we are talking with.
And what, did I hear that we didn't, that we also, on that same one, we're on F, that we wanted to remove the reference to this work session, since we didn't, someone raised that?
Yes, it's got July 23, 2018 on it.
Right, take that out, since we didn't do that. And Mr. Moon, did you have a comment on this? It was something else, okay. So let's see, how many people can support, who would it impact? Does that capture it? Okay, how many people can support? Okay, Mr. Moon?
I would like to have a report or a presentation from staff on sustaining model of ACE program sometime.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you put that one? So an, oh, a presentation or just an explanation?
It's a presentation or a report. I'll leave it up to the superintendent, presentation or report.
Or report, okay, so or report on sustaining model of the ACE program. Does that capture it?
Yes.
All right, how many people can support doing that? All right, and with that, I believe we're at the end of this work session. We have one amendment, that Mr. Moon's amendment, I have not heard anybody else with another amendment at this point.
I'm just wondering, my question about how to include that in recurring, should that be for the future? Should that be a follow-on?
Tell me the future.
Do you need it to be next up? I just want to make sure we don't drop that.
That will be part of the regular budget process.
Okay. And so I would say, if anybody is thinking of any other amendments, please be sure and talk with staff and let your colleagues know just as soon as possible, since we're voting in this Thursday night. And with that, we'll take a three-minute break, five-minute break? All right, five-minute break, and then we...